Meeting to order. And, uh, public comment. Madam Clerk, have you got anybody signed up?
No, sir.
All right, let's go to number three. Possible action. Somebody help me out here, possible action. Anybody got anything to say?
They've set in the Board of Commissioners objectives.
Huh?
You objecting?
Well, they just said discussion and possible action on setting the 2023 Board of Commissioners objectives. Who wants to address that?
Well, since it's related to budget, I'll try. Um, in, in the past, the commissioners have established a laundry list of things that should be accomplished, uh, in the upcoming, um, fiscal year. Um, and maybe not so much just limited to the upcoming fiscal year, but more of a strategic, uh, nature. And, um, over the last several years, anyway, there's been several iterations of that. Last year's goals and objectives, and I believe the year before, um, had been included. They've kind of merged and run together. And, um, it's a, it's a, a good problem to have. Um, but I think that the board, um, would benefit from maybe consolidating and, and parsing down into a, a, a shorter, a shorter list of things to do so that we can, uh, attempt to craft a, a, a budget with those main items in mind.
Well, if I could say something, I think that, um, that Heather, and you may have misinterpreted what I said at a, a meeting when, um, I was discussing putting in things that we had discussed with you, David, about your objectives for the upcoming period of time. Because it wasn't about putting in the list of projects that we have already said are priorities. It was the fact that the board's objective is that you create a project plan and complete capital project plan for 10 projects. And that this is how we will watch and manage them from beginning to completion. So Heather put all of these different projects back in to the objectives, but the real objective is that a capital project plan is created and kept up to date, and the projects will be watched and managed by this plan. And those different projects were the Army Corps project, the pier property renovation, including pursuing funding, the stormwater mitigation project, including pursuing funding, water tower needs assessment, possible construction, including pursuing funding, existing restroom renovation, overall plan for restrooms into the future, including pursuing funding. That's getting repetitive, isn't it? Um, block queue development for at least boat sewer parking, ADA/ADA compliant beach access plan and implementation, sewer system improvements with station two and the other modifications, pay parking adjustment, lost spaces, ADA compliance. And to that was added the 796 building project, whatever that becomes defined to be. So those are not individual objectives for this board anymore. Um, they've been accepted as priority objectives. Now it's a matter of a plan and managing those projects through that plan. This was agreed by the board.
That's true. It's, it's all in here.
Yeah, but, but it, this is, this is what, it, it is. These are all priorities. The objective is that there is a robust, realistic capital projects plan covering 10 projects. Created by town management. That will then be used to follow and manage all the projects to completion.
Is it a problem to do that?
I, it, it's fine with me. We just want to get it all out there.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
We just want to get it all out there regardless of what form it takes.
You agree to this, David?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
It was a sensible, it was a sensible thing to do during this budget cycle to get this all together, so.
A- a- absolutely. And, and I, I don't take any umbrage with, you know, being articulated that way. It's just that what we were faced with is we, we wanted to make sure that everybody knew everything that was on the table as it relates to what's going into the budget. Because a capital plan will, will go into the budget along with, with the other things, too. If, if the, the projects line is reduced to, um, one, one thing that's called a capital projects, uh, plan and program, you know, that's fine. I mean, I get the things that are in there, but at least for the, the first go around, um, we wanted to make sure that it was registered with everybody.
I mean, there's still the boat ramp, um, lobbying to try to sometime in the near future, um, get a mainland boat ramp that I know that you and the mayor are both on board with. But that isn't a capital project. That is a influence lobbying effort.
Is there anything that can be, like, the no wake zone, I know that has been put out there.
Well, that sure does not need to be eliminated. It just, it doesn't have to be on the, the big project list, but it still needs to be something that is on our radar screen for, uh, see if we can't move forward.
I didn't hear you read.
The, uh, the no wake zone requirements. And I think that's going to take a little bit of movement by the city. Is that correct, Ellen?
Every time I watch your doctor friends boat beat up against the dock down there, I still think it's critically important.
Yes, sir.
And it's an ongoing conversation that we have. Every opportunity we have on the state and the core meetings, I mean, I, I don't know about the rest of it, I'm sure you're doing all you can, too, but it's a high priority in my mind. Somebody gonna get hurt. There's jet skis going through there at 50 and 60 miles an hour. I mean, it's, it's just gonna happen sooner or later.
With the other projects that were listed, I don't think they were listed maybe in the order of importance, but they are all listed, I believe. I think you captured most of those and a, you know, that's that IOIs that you send us regularly, they need to be, make sure that they are continually updated so we all know where we stand.
There's just a few things in here that I know has been taken care of, like fill open position in building inspections and things like that. I don't know if you want to remove that, it doesn't matter to me, but some of it has been done.
Yeah, we certainly need to be, have a, a line drawn to them, I believe. The Ocean Boulevard paving and bike lanes, I hate to, to laugh, but it's, it's, it's just about ridiculous that we don't have that done already. However, there were restraints, uh, that were brought up by the DOT that didn't allow us to get that done last year, but we all, I don't think anybody here on the board does not want to see that completed this year.
The big ticket items we're working on definitely, in my opinion, we need to keep track of them from day one until the end. So if you could do that separately, David, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, in-
People gonna want to know what.
In the, um, in the, in the, uh, the budget workshop, there's your, because today was a quarterly update number one, and there's, um, there's a rundown on those. It's, uh, similar to the IOI format that I give you, but it's what we know most currently on that.
Okay, the projects are covered. Amenities, park and rec, we delineated, we delineated the marsh. We need to, we still need to go forward bulk heading, but that's, that's covered in parking adjustments, which to me is the decision of what to do with the 800 block. The boat ramp, as I said, is still a lobbying effort, as is in the wake zone. Uh, general, we just discussed, um, actually, a new one in general is develop a plan, a plan to enforce North Carolina laws governing LSVs. Traditionally, when we have something like that, we all score it.
Well, I think Jeremy took a, a giant step forward by putting the venue, video on our website that just shows exactly how dangerous these vehicles are. But I think, uh, the last little bit there, no more excuses. We need to be diligent in making sure that the laws of North Carolina are upheld. I don't think stopping a car, a truck, a van, or a golf cart makes any difference. If they're breaking the law by not wearing a seatbelt, then they need to be, if nothing else, I think just the stopping and, uh, talking with the folks, not necessarily a citation or warning, and word gets out that, uh, that we're not going to play that game. I think it'll, 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 it'll spread through the rental community and allow them to caution their renters as to how, uh, how we're addressing this issue. I just don't want anybody hurt. So that's, 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 that needs to stay there.
Infrastructure, the easement from East End of Harrowland and Wind, is that still a high priority?
Well, I don't, I don't, sorry.
That was, that was something that Gerald brought up.
Right, but, but as it relates to the, um, canal dredging projects and also the water asset inventory, I, I think that, um, that's standing by itself. You don't have justification for it, but it is related to those two efforts that y'all have. It, it's part of a larger piece, I think is what I'm saying.
Is that something we can eliminate from the list?
I don't think so. We don't have a dredge pole area per se, so, so dialogue needs to be held.
It'll be related to that when that issue of dredge pole access grows a bit, develops more.
Okay.
Communication. The audio town hall has been improved. I assume everybody is okay with that?
Pat, I just don't see spending-
I'm, I'm, I'm just going through them.
Thirty-five, forty thousand dollars to make any major changes. I think moving your microphones right in front of your face helps a lot, as, from what I've been told.
There's a post B O C M message going out by the town regularly. Town blasts, um, again, um, once we have project plan and everything, we can use town blast to communicate whatever we want. I don't know what the second one is exactly. But create a THB email list to circulate true and accurate opinion of the town. I don't exactly know what that is. But the town blast part is covered. Um, does anybody remember who created a THB mail list to circulate true and accurate opinion of the town?
That was one of the ones from last year.
Okay, I don't.
It was specifically, um, uh, coincided with, uh, or I perceived it as an attempt to, um, to provide near real-time information whenever the pier was being considered to be adopted. Um, as a matter of practice and policy, um, we probably don't need to do that because the people that are on, that want to have access to the town's email blast, they subscribe to it. And, um, to go out there and hunt emails is a, I don't know if we want to do that or not.
So communication, basically, we've taken all three of last year's off, and there's nothing that's been added this year.
I don't mean to, I would rather not back up, but going back under the general heading, uh, the filling the open positions in the building inspectors, uh, department, is that something that has been taken care of?
Yeah, I think we already-
Okay, then that is a line to be, thank you.
Finance and budget, um, we've got the meeting scheduled. I think, uh, we just, that, that is going to be an objective year in, year out, to keep three meetings, um, get things out ahead of time. A new one, and I added it, redefine the policy for the Capital Reserve Fund for Beach Renourishment, restrict its use solely for physical beach renourishment, define the annual revenue streams of implementation during fiscal year 23, 24. In other words, this budget year, we need to get together how we're going to be funding that forward. However we choose to do beach renourishment in future, whether it's a core project, or it's FEMA, or something happens and we're not covered, we have got to have money on hand. Other beaches, and you guys should know this, they have revenue streams defined. Part of it is their B part, part of it comes from dedicated money from ADVal. Sometimes they create special districts on the island, and I am not saying that we should do that, but I am saying we ought to have a defined constant revenue stream going into a beach renourishment fund that is only going to be used for beach renourishment when we have a need to get sand out on the beach.
I'll, I'll comment on that, um, and, and I totally understand where you're coming from on that, um, but to impose a restriction thusly at this point in time, I think we need to be able to push, we need to be push, be able to push some numbers around on the spreadsheet just to see where we end up at. If, if that in case is possible, fine and dandy, but I don't know where, where you're going to end up until we push-
I don't believe we should take any more money out of that beach renourishment fund at a minimum. Our mistake was two years ago, when we didn't know what would happen to COVID, we used 1.3 some million out of the beach renourishment fund because we didn't know what our, our occupancy tax was, so we paid for a year of, um, of the, um, sorry, I'm really struggling today, of, uh, central reach. We paid for a year of debt service, and then we did not put it back in, which we should have done. So we have very little left in that fund, and I do not think we should take any more out, or anything.
Well, you, you haven't been privy to some of the revenue numbers that, that we're going to show you as part of the, the budget workshop.
I, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I do not think we should take any more money out of the beach renourishment fund to cover anything right now. It is, it, it has been paid down for different things that it shouldn't have been paid down. We should have put the money back in that one year, and we didn't. So, but we need to redefine where we're going on this. We need to be saving money.
Chris, do you have something to add?
Yes, um, it, when Pat first started speaking, she said unless it's sand on the beach, and historically, we have used that when we had the Ben Widener project every other year, and it is our year for that. Um, in the budget worksheets that I provided to Daniel, somewhere in the cross, we missed that showing up, but I did, even though we didn't show any other transfers, I did show that as a transfer this year because the anticipated amount for us without them getting the bids back in yet, based on the historical spreadsheet we did, was, is going to be our share 253,125. So I did have that as a transfer for this year, but the board will need to consider that, because that is sand on the beach on the east end.
And I'll vote against it. I'll just say that. I'll vote against it. I'll vote to take the money from someplace else. If we're serious about saving for the future, we're going to have to bite the bullet and start this. This is important. Somebody else want to take over on this? I'm really, I'm really struggling, guys. Sorry, I'm, I just got over a stomach bug. I'm not in the best of shape.
I think the next one down is provide the Board of Commissioners with a final report on internal control modifications and improvement. That probably needs to stay there. Transfer money from the general fund-
Well, I'm, I'd like to address that.
Okay.
Um, the, this year's external auditor did not define, did not identify any problems with internal control.
This goes back several years, and it was a task that you started and you were asked to finish. You created spreadsheets, you created a timeline, you created the actual deliverables. It's just a matter of finishing it. It is something that, that began so far back, I don't think any of the others of you were actually on the board at the time. Mike Sullivan and I were. It was started, it can, it can be finished. Yeah, you were there, too. I know, Mr. Mayor, you were there, of course.
Okay, that's, that's on our priority list, correct? Leave it there.
Make it be done.
Okay.
Oh, I'm gonna make it be done.
Transfer money from the general fund to the beach and inlet fund to define the existing policy. Board of Commissioners and Town Manager.
Um, I, I'm going to address that one, too. I'm not aware of a, an existing policy that, um, defines that, that there is an existing practice as, uh, as we've done in the past where that's been done, but there's not any defined policy, uh, to that point. Um, I know that that's part and parcel of the same, the same issue as above relating to the, the use of the Capital Reserve, um, beach management, or beach renourishment fund. Um, but, but there's not a, a policy in that, you know, my, my advice to the board is, well, we need to push those numbers around some more, just like, uh, above, until we see where things settle out to decide on exactly what the policy's going to be.
Okay.
So there's no existing policy?
There is a written, it was written maybe four years ago, possibly five. It had to do with when the general fund balance is, I think, above the upper end target, which was 70%? Was it 70? In excess, um, in excess would go to the beach and inlet, would go to the sand fund.
And, and that's a pro, a practice that we have not followed due to some of the borrowing protocols that we, um, use as rationale for some of the boards, um, the towns' purchase-
Just don't fund to the sand fund. We don't rely, we fund the sand fund, is what it means.
There was a one that had 16 ADN agreed infrastructure and amenities, parks and rec projects cost to the, to the CIP.
If I recall, that was done last year. It's, it's in the C, all of them are in the CIP.
Our new, our new facilities would not be, but it was out of last year.
Well, it goes without saying that CIP needs to be updated as part of this entire effort.
Yes, sir.
To include all of the projects that you've got listed.
Uh, I think the improve the bu, budget transparency, create specific budget sections within B part for the pier property with sufficient detail to track revenues, expenses related to the access, of the access lot, building, renovation, parking lot, including the RV slots and the pier.
We should use-
And I think we decided we wanted to put those all in a separate column so we could see the-
But I, I can tell you, we're probably going to have some more this year.
And I was going to say, we should use this year's budget as, as making sure that all the details are there. We were just starting it.
We were crabbing toward it.
Yep.
Right, and I think, uh, we've talked about last time of the expanding the detail in the budget lines that cover professional services. In fact, I think you said you needed to break that, break that down into more of a, a monthly report versus a quarterly or yearly report.
Hmm.
It can go in the budget as well.
It's just in the budget.
Right. The upgrade budget measure document-
But, but to that point, is, uh, to that point, this reads which firm has received fees, I guess that is. And, you know, you, you don't budget by putting a firm's name in the budget. Maybe over in the detail you would describe, and when we get to the project worksheets, we've got a descriptive column that is going to elaborate on that somewhat.
It is easy to do, not in the actual budget line, but in a back, and I see, I see other places do it. You have a special sheet for it.
And y'all haven't seen that yet. That's what I'm saying. When we get there, you're going to see that.
Right.
If you upgrade bu, budget measure document to include details and pie charts on relative department, departmental and types of expenses as well, and full de, details on the debt service schedules, as was done in 1819. I believe last year we got those. So, does that need to be left in, or is that going to be general practice now?
Well, I, I, uh, I can tell you, I'm, doing the pie charts is, is a piece of cake. Um, um, I think that probably, and I don't remember what was in the, the budget message last year relative to having debt service schedules. I, I just don't recall that off the top of my head, but since with the, um, we've had couple of three additional debt service schedules, plus we've improved, um, our, um, our accessibility via debt book to providing those, so putting the, the debt service schedules in there i- is, is going to be, uh, much more straightforward, plus the fact that, um, what I'm hoping to do is to integrate that effort into the CIP prog, into the CIP program. Um, I'm not going to make any promises. At worst case scenario, you've got two different documents, but still, that's, that's not an issue.
David, I know personally and as well as some of our, our citizens, that the pie charts make it an easy read and easy, uh, way to look at, uh, how the funds are being distributed. So that's a, I think as long as we can continue to do that, we'll be good. All right. Uh, policies and procedures, this is getting down into the fourth things, but, uh, define priority enforcement and compliance objectives for the Board of Commissioners, followed by a plan to address the objectives with the Board of Commissioners and the Town Manager.
This has been probably the third year in a row that this is made, um, this list. Um, my point is, it seems to be important every year, and we're not doing anything. This is something for the board to actually get together and decide what it really wants enforced in a year, and then how the departments can do it. And you can't enforce everything at once, so it has to be, you can't start an enforcement of everything at once. Needs to be something about what is important, and then turn it over to the department that's responsible for it to figure out how to do it. So just having it on the list again, and not doing anything to me, this, I mean, this is where LSV would go.
But don't you think, Pat, that the extra meetings we have scheduled this year, we could put something in those to address these?
Of, of, of course. I mean, there's nothing that says that we can't meet additionally to address our objectives. In fact, that's what we should be doing, is periodically looking at the list and saying, are we on track to get things done? What do we need to do to get them done?
Well, I thought that was the idea behind the, the quarterly meetings.
Well, quarterly meeting, a lot of it was to figure out where we are on projects. It's going to be heavily linked to project plan and progress made, but yes. Same thing can be for us to put things together so that we can better address an objective.
Okay. Board review update as needed for all departments, compliance, policies, procedures, and then ensure and communicate links to all necessary information and forms. ensure and communicate links to all necessary information and forms.
I just put that one on. Um, I believe that we should understand what all the department's complaint policies are, are as much as possible, make them consistent, and make sure that the public knows what they are and knows where to go for the necessary forms. And I, I do not personally know what, I don't personally know where to go for everyone. I don't know how to make a paper complaint to Public Works or to the police. I, I, I don't. I don't. And I, I, but I think it would be worthwhile to see what the complaint policy is for each department that citizens use to file a complaint, see if they need to be changed any, and then to give it a rollout to the public so they have a reminder of where to go if they have a complaint that needs to be filed on paper.
How is that currently handled, Dave? I know there's a-
That was, I was gonna ask him the same thing.
Complaint form and inspection, but-
Yeah, the inspections one, I believe, is actually right online, but I think the other departments are more, like, if I get a complaint, it's typically on the phone or an email. It doesn't have to be an actual form. I think it just depends what department you have. But we do have a form to fill out if there's overgrown yards. It goes to the department. But, but the inspections department has a formal form. The rest of us are pretty informal and just, I get a complaint, it's for Chris, it goes to Chris, he handles it.
Well, that's the getting, I understand, that's, that's getting a complaint, but what's the policy? You know, if a complaint comes in, the ti, you know, how is it handled? How long? Those things.
Well, I don't know, go ahead, your panel, pay for coffee, it's a form we operate very quick, just like that female come in today and it's handled today. I don't like to push up on, on backwards, but I hear you. But apparently they, they didn't want to do, because I'm getting plenty of them.
Torn to crap.
Well, again, I, I think my only thought is, there's, and again, I hate work, but when I was working, there was always, if there was a complaint filed, it had to go into a, like a database. And then if, even if it's, you know, taken care of that day, then it's checked off that day, and it, it, it stays on the list, but it, it kinda goes into another part. And then when another one comes in and if you say, well, you, maybe I missed this one, and go back and review them and see what you, you know, if there was a missed or overlooked or it's been complained about again. I just, you know, I can agree that there needs to be some kinda checking balance that, you know, you guys do a great job, and a lot of times, like you said, you do it within the day, and that's, there's a lot to be said for that. But just some way to possibly track them, that, you know, whether you write them down or, or document them somehow and get them checked off when they're complete.
I think I would caution about having a too formal process, because I know how many, Chris specifically, a day that come to me and him and I handle within an hour or so. If you're gonna make it formal, it could take longer, is all I'm saying. I, I mean, everything is formal, because all of our emails are public record and we have to keep everything, so by putting it into a, you have to do this, this and that, when I could just call Chris and be like, can you go check that trash for me? You're gonna be putting it longer on the homeowner, but it's completely up to you guys. And I'm not sure about your-
And that's done for our departments?
Tim has a formal procedure in his department.
Yeah, we have a, we have a formal policy. Once you file a written complaint, uh, we, it then gets handed to who, whichever person is supposed to take care of it. It's then logged in, and depending on what has to be done, it then enters into a system. But we also take the paper copy, depending on what work has to be done. A lot of times it requires certified mail or some sort of a letter that goes out, that's also followed up and put into a book that is kept. So, we have both electronic and a paper copy of it. We, the way we know whether or not it's complete or not is if it's something that we have to go back and look at. It's entered into the inspection, into our inspection program, and we, if it's a letter that says you gotta have it completed in thirty days, in thirty days it shows up on the inspection. We don't have to remember it, we don't have to go back and check. It comes back to us for us to go check. And of course, we take action after that if necessary. So, that's our policy.
And, and go, to go back to, keep using Chris, sorry, but I guess Chris gets all the complaints, Chris. But I get a call from one of you guys on the weekend and you have a water leak or at your neighbor's house. I called Chris and he has on call go out. We start making stuff like that formal, you're gonna have a little bit longer of a-
I mean, he calls Jeremy, and these guys go out there and turn the water off.
The only formal, the only formal is it gets recorded somewhere, taken, acted.
I just, I don't know how we, back to Chris, like, I don't get all Chris's, I, he doesn't have a secretary in his department, so I'm sure Megan gets some for him. I'm sure the front desk gets some for him. I'm sure-
I get the wrong Greg, 'cause like, we're really, she's talking about the police department don't be a lot of times, or they're calling the wrong guy, and that's, and we respond that day, soon, something like that, something like, that holds the service or whatever.
I just don't know who his se, he does not have a secretary like Tim does or like Jeremy does, so I don't-
I guess, oh, whatever, we can do that, too. Just don't stick the process, it won't flatter you, I'm out of town, or sometimes I don't have a booth with me, I don't even have to remember to do it like you're mine.
My biggest concern is like, to make sure the public's informed on how they can do it.
Yeah.
And to, you know, that's it with, if they have a problem, they can get to somebody.
On the order side, if, you know, our people, we can do some information, there and simple, we leave your ass super bagged and stuff, you can, the total number they can call.
Give them a, a regular weekly number and then an after hours and a weekend number.
Guys, this was really only about, you know, setting a priority or not, not trying to solve the issue-
Right.
Right at the moment. I mean, we, we could simply say, let's look at everybody's procedures or how they handle it, have a short meeting and decide what to do, but it wasn't to solve it today.
Okay, well, I thought we pretty much had. If we just publish some numbers for like time and weekends and otherwise it's handling itself pretty well with the procedures that Tim has, the police department has, and our public works. But we can revisit it again if necessary, if we see that it's, uh, not being handled correctly. All right. Evergreens. Are we ready to move on?
Review of personnel policies. Bottom of the page. Again, that was something that we discussed with the town manager about a priority for him to make sure that the personnel policy was up to date, and were there things that needed to be improved, proposed that would improve retention and development? I think at the very least, if I remember right, when we discussed the, um, the change in pay for everyone to bring them into alignment with the market, it was decided that increases, everyone would get their pay increases now starting July?
That hadn't been determined.
You said it.
I said that, it looks like that's where we're going to, but I'm not sure that we've got some practical considerations before committing to that.
That was not my understanding.
Well, but that's, that is really a microcosm of an overall review of personnel policies. I think your personnel policies are where they need to be right now, 'cause that, the implementation, that pay plan has solved a whole bunch of problems.
I'm only one board member. If you guys don't wanna do anything, just say so.
When a review of the personnel policies, policies must be undertaken, but is there a specific area that needs to be?
This is what we discussed with the town manager about his objectives only a couple months ago. It was agreed, the whole board, this was part of it.
I don't think, we, we haven't had any, the, the merit date like they were just talking about, isn't specifically something that would need to be changed regarding, if we change the date or not, you don't have to go into the personnel policy and change that. As far as the personnel policy itself, I haven't had any negative feedback on that policy. That policy is not that old, and there's really not anything that I could think of at this time that would need to be changed in order to retain people. I think to retain people with what you just did with the, the salary is what is going to help retain people and attract people to the town. So, I wouldn't think that there is anything particular that you guys need to do right now.
Well, we will still do yearly reviews.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, I think that, that there's been talk of changing the merit increases to July first for everybody, and there are some potential problems with that, but I mean, that's not something that has to be, the policy itself wouldn't need to be changed for doing that. That's more of an internal town policy that would have to be changed, not the personnel policy itself.
I was, excuse me, I was under the impression that it would make it easier for department heads to, to do their reviews and, uh, kind of-
From speaking with them, I'm not sure that they agree, no. And it honestly, the way that we do, we do a review, when you're hired, you do it six months, you get six month probation, and you get your review at that point, and then it's a year from that point. From talking to pretty much everybody, I feel like they're more on page of keeping the dates that we have now. I mean, staff will do it either way if it's a big problem with the board, but we don't see any problem with the way that we're doing it at this time. And I think it would be easier for somebody like Jeremy who has nine people, instead of having to do nine reviews right on July first, I think it's probably easier for him to do it sporadically throughout the year, giving a year's worth of time for each person specifically, instead of having staggered amounts depending on when you're hired. So, in speaking with the staff, we haven't, nobody's really wanted to change it, but if that's what the board would like, we could do whatever the board would like.
In my opinion, that's a department head decision along with the town manager. As long as everybody's happy, I'm, I'm loving it, so.
All right. Moving on to the evergreens. Start at the top. Balance the budget while preserving the minimum fund balance as assigned, is defined by the board. That's pretty much, that's our goal. Balance, balance the budget without raising taxes.
I will not go for that one this year. I will not, I, I wouldn't put that in this year. Balancing the budget, preserving minimum fund balance is fine. I'm not making any commitment about not raising taxes. Not raising taxes for the pure property or for block Q, I agree with, but just not raising taxes at all?
Do you mean the amount collected or the rate?
Well, the, the, the rate's not gonna go up. I'll, I'll stick my neck out on that, the rate.
It's the amount, the amount collected, not the amount-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, 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 no, 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 the amount collected, amount collected.
And, and, well, I've got a worksheet that's gonna help y'all hopefully with that.
Well, I believe these were, I think the, the title was this, was objectives. I don't think it was requirements, that we do everything that's on this list, but we should work as, as hard as we can.
I would not put it in this year, or just balance, it, it's like, it's like we said we would not raise taxes to pay for the pier or block Q. We would not raise taxes for those projects.
And we did that.
And I think that that is our commitment long term. But to say we're not raising taxes, period, got a lot of expenses, we're paying people more and they deserve it. At some point, something's gotta give here, and we may need to raise the tax rate.
We also have to look into the fire department and have them provide that twenty-four hours, so.
So, I, I mean, if you're gonna say not raise taxes, you better be specific about you're not gonna raise taxes to pay certain things. But I would not put this in the objectives this year, the legislature.
Well, I didn't put it in there either, but it's-
No, no, it's an evergreen. That's, it's a carryover for several years.
Correct, but with the increased property values that I think we all got, I think we're gonna have, uh, there's gonna be some, uh, some increases, but it's, uh, we'll do our best to balance a budget without raising taxes any more than is necessary, but I'm gonna draw a line through that, Pat.
But do our best to balance the budget without raising taxes.
That's, all we can do is our best. I mean, and we're, we're not set out this year to, uh, our plan is to raise taxes. If it happens, we're, uh, we're gonna do the best we can to, uh, make them as small as possible. And we're gonna ensure the town meets or receives annual financial goals, budget goals. That's pretty much under the same umbrella. Uh, work together for the good of Holden Beach. I don't think any of us would be up here if we didn't want to work together for the good of Holden Beach. Raise revenues. We have, uh, I think we're part of our, the goals we looked at on the, the, the front of this, the projects we got going, uh, will all help feed, uh, the, the increase in revenues, but it's gonna, it's gonna take a little to get a little. Continue to support, uh, Lockwood Folly access to the ocean. I think we, that has been discussed here quite a bit lately.
I would stop it right there. I would not say continue inlet support at all costs. I would just stop it at the first point.
No, not at all cost, I don't support that, you know.
Then take that one.
But we gotta support it. We've, uh, I think with the meetings that have been going on here lately, I think that, uh, it's just mother nature has not been friendly to that area, I think. Now, this is just my thinking, that, uh, the previous dredging where the, uh, the sand was put east of us has caused the, uh, the normal progression to the west to cause the sholing and, and is causing the issues we've got. Hopefully that the core and, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll see that it needs to be moved toward the west, so it will continue to, uh, to move that way and hopefully keep that inlet clear. I think it is important to the town of Holden Beach, is our taxpayers, our boaters, our guests, uh, that that inlet stay open as well as the health, uh, of our water. Uh, we sure don't want to end up with, uh, water here that we can't swim in. That would be detrimental to the town of Holden Beach. So, looking after that, I think we all have our eye on it, and I think we will continue to support that, uh, that accessway. Good? Can I do? Okay. Uh, ensure the town achieves an unmodified option rating on the annual physical audit and address noted deficiency.
That's done.
Uh, I would think that that could be removed.
That's three years old.
Well, that's, it's, that's, that's why it's an evergreen. It's like every year, this is what we expect.
Well, but then you're assuming that you're gonna have noted deficiencies and you don't have any. That one reads that you got noted deficiencies, as well as the, the following infers that there's material deficiencies also.
Just taking the end of that off.
The next one down, ensure qualified resources are available to perform an audit. I think we've, uh, I think we're having a separate financial manager and the town manager working with them together with a, uh, certified audit outfit, I think we're gonna, should be able to get through another year's audit without having any deficiencies. Do you see any issues? David?
No, sir.
Maintain an up-to-date strategy to protect the beach and the doomed system and ensure adequate budget for implementation of plans, including soil sampling and plant modification where appropriate. That's, we, we do that all the time. Support and participate in a beach and inlet-related advocacy efforts at local, state, and federal level. I think we've been in contact with them to keep that rolling. Yes, Kristy?
They just need to be updated now, it's like words new, because they're not full of code in there.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I was looking at A, that's why I couldn't see what she said, okay. Support and participate in the advocacy efforts at any level as appropriate, and I think we're, we're working to do that the best we can. Does anybody think they have any addition, wanna add any additions to this? Twenty-two, twenty-three objectives plan? Is everybody good?
All right, let's turn, let's turn our attention back to the agenda, please. Does anyone have a problem with addressing number five before we address number four? Because I think we can save some time with that. Jim, I have a problem. And also, Madam Clark, for the record, would you show that there's no member of the public in attendance at any time so far in our meeting today? And also that we have a full board present? Just for the purpose of recordation?
Yeah, I have no problem with, with them, David already told me he's got.
Okay. Without objection, then, let's look at number five, budget workshop. Are you ready to talk about that, Mr. Yurt?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everybody understand what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
We'll come back to number four in a minute. All right, go ahead, Mr. Yurt.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to run through three main points today, although there are, I've got about ten, twelve slides here. Briefly talking about the schedule, do some familiarization as to exactly how the, how the document, our draft budget is laid out by fund and revenue and expenses, and then also where the meat of the, of the information is, is some highlights associated with it. So our schedule, the board actually coalesced its first, its initially scheduled workshop goals and the, the budget workshop number one and quarterly meeting. We've shoehorned that into today's effort where we've talked about the board's goals along with the first kickoff budget workshop, and then at the end of this presentation, I've got some project information which will serve as the quarterly, the initial quarterly workshop. We're working with the canal dredging working group to get the, the meeting together for their inputs into the budget. Just as a sidebar, the annual surveys for the canals have been completed and we're awaiting the engineers' quantification or the volumetrics to be finalized before we meet with them, which should be pretty soon. And we'll, we'll dovetail that into our, our working efforts. The twentieth of April, the next meeting is scheduled, the next budget workshop, which is solely a budget workshop meeting. Number two, there's a tenant or a deadline of Memorial Day or the thirty-first of May for the manager's budget message to be published. Then that will be followed by the board's budget meeting. Number three, on the first of June, the budget public hearing on the fifteenth that'll coincide with the quarterly workshop meeting. And then also, it's proposed that the board will consider the actual budget ordinance on the twenty-first of June. So to the, to the way the document is laid out, it's basically a traditional general fund, water fund, and the B part fund, although that we do have the capital funds interspersed through there. So it's by fund and the, the initial portion of that fund, whichever one you're in, you'll have the revenues first and then the expenses. This year, what we've tried to do is we've tried, tried to break it out in, using seven columns, taking the actual results from the end of fiscal year twenty-one. Columns two and three are the, the budget for twenty-two and where we ended up in June of twenty-two. And then columns four and, I'm, I'm sorry, columns four and five are the, the twenty-three budget along with actual where we are, in this case, as of March third. Then the, the last column there is the proposed, or the sixth column is the proposed budget. That's where we're trying to get to. And then if you look, some of the internal pages there, there's a column for comments and that's where the descriptions of some of the, of, of the, the big ticket items or the more complex items will be memorialized. So this is, it goes without saying that this is a very preliminary rough draft. It represents the department head's initial service level estimates, but I also wanted to dial in and make sure that we got the format and the outline of the working inputs and outputs in front of the board, so if there were any other types of information, now's the time to put that forward so we can capture it, but I believe that's good unless there's any other information beyond this. This is traditionally what places do. We have gone back and captured an additional year back to twenty-one. There hasn't been much of a scrub unless the department heads have captured it back and forth with Daniel. There's, there's plenty of, of internal transfer values that are not included. So it's pretty much open for a free-range discussion. It does not include a draft of the CIP yet, but it, it will. We do have the, the foundation documents kind of scoped out preliminarily that we're going to be bringing to bear resulting from some of the actual mechanics of, of spreadsheet manipulation that is forthcoming. I do have three specifics for the purposes of this initial discussion. That is, I wanted to address the revaluation and the revenue tax rate. That's a fairly complex subject and I figured if anybody was gonna put some numbers out there and confuse everybody, I wanted to go first and get mine down so that, so that we could go ahead and, and understand it from the get-go, or if there's any, if we've made some erroneous assumptions that they were identified early on. Also, looking at occupancy tax projections and then as a special interest item, one major change that we're proposing this year is to consolidate the parking revenues, to some extent consolidate the parking revenues or house them all in the B part fund. If you're not familiar with revaluation, generally Brunswick County is one of the counties that does their revaluation every four years instead of some places do it every eight years. The foot stomping number here is that the tax base for Holden Beach has increased by seventy-three percent. This year's valuation was two-point-three-seven billion dollars. The corresponding tax value in twenty-twenty-two was one-point-three-seven billion dollars. The, the calculated revenue neutral tax rate is equal to twelve-point-zero-two cents. And that revenue neutral tax rate is the tax rate that is applied to the new tax base, and this is by definition, that generates an ad valorem revenue stream. It's equal to last year's dollars and adjusted for an average growth rate since the last evaluation that was performed, that being four years ago. And it is a number that it, that the town is required to publish in the ordinance.
Mr. Yurt?
Yes, sir.
Point of clarification, I know several people have this on their mind. Is that number reflective of the fact that the fishing pier properties and Block Q are removed, or are they still included?
I have not checked, checked on that, but in, in a two-point-three-billion-dollar tax rate, not being flippant, three million is the equivalent of three houses. But we'll double-check that. As will we check Block Q also. So I wanted to, for purposes of discussion, I provided a handout. So what, what, what does, what does revenue neutral mean when, when you're talking about my house? And what we've done is provided a, a revaluation worksheet and, and provided some examples. Remembering that overall, the tax rate for all of Holden Beach is seventy-three percent increased. And I've taken selected six properties across the island here, looking at what the tax value was in twenty-twenty-two against the tax value in twenty-twenty-three. In the third major column there, I, I show the percent value change by property. And as you can see, some of the properties increased more than the seventy-three percent that's island-wide, and many of them, of the six, are increases that are less than the island-wide increase, while some are pretty close at sixty-three, sixty-nine, and seventy percent. So I, I go through some calculations on what the, what the tax bill was in twenty-two when the rate was twenty cents, and then I also show what that twenty cent tax rate would do to those properties if you were to maintain the same tax rate. And I'm not proposing that that's what be done here. I just wanted to make sure that, that the manager is not considering proposing the same tax rate on a tax property valuation that's seventy-three percent more than it was last year. But I wouldn't be here tomorrow probably if, but I'd be run out on a rail. So I've gone ahead and calculated what the revenue neutral tax rate for the same properties and then done a comparison to show that if the board were to consider adopting a revenue neutral tax rate by property, out of those six properties, only two of them would actually show an increase in their tax bill, keeping in mind that their values, I'm sorry, half of them would be above, half of them would show an increase in their tax bill and the other half of them wouldn't show an increase in their tax bill. That, and that is why the point I'm trying to illustrate is that, that's an average of property values increasing island-wide of seventy-three percent. Some peoples increase more and some peoples don't increase as much as the island-wide value. So, you know, that said, what I, what I wanted to do by way of illustration is just how, how that goes on, and I believe that this year's foot stomping number, I had that calculated and I'll have to, I'll have to share that with y'all later. Usually I try to say that a penny on the tax rate, for example, last year it was a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars roughly. It's a penny on the tax rate this year is gonna be different from that, and I'll share that with you, because you're gonna need to, to know that when you start making considerations on what the tax rate's gonna be. Suffice it to say, what we've done for the purposes of, of the draft budget worksheets is that we have shown the amount, the revenue neutral amount in the preliminary draft as a placeholder and as a placeholder only at this time.
David?
Yes?
Those six houses, is the representation like oceanfront versus canal versus? That's what I thought.
One of them's oceanfront.
One on the second row.
One on the second row.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars.
I was gonna say quarter. For occupancy tax collections, what we've, what we've got, I wanted to point out, for the past decade or more, we've been tracking occupancy taxes, and before COVID, that showed a steady, steady, slow growth of one to three percent. But once we got to the COVID year and then the post-years after that, those revenues jacked dramatically. And what we are on pace for now is in this year's budget, I believe we initially budgeted three-point-seven million, but then because we've got a grant or something in, we reduced it to three-five. But I think that we're gonna close out this fiscal year, thirty June twenty-three, at pretty close to four million dollars in the, in the projections there. And what I'm proposing to do is that we carry that momentum into twenty-four for next year's estimate of a, a pretty close to four million dollars. That's good news. On the consolidation of the parking revenues into B part fund, since we got part and parcel of organizing the parking revenues, the way that it's in our existing budget was a function of how we had to account for those revenues and, and their uses. Since we've gotten the legislation that provides for the use of those, those revenues for any public purpose, we've drafted the budget to reflect those being consolidated in the B part fund, but we're, we'll continue to separate those, those parking revenues that are directly associated with the pier parking lot, keeping in, in mind and in spirit the intent to treat the pier as a cost center or revenue center. Bottom line, I think that we're gonna show revenues that are close to five-hundred-thousand dollars this year, upcoming year in parking. And that would include the, the increases that y'all passed last month. Some of the highlights on additional funding streams, we have asked for direct state appropriations for the upcoming state, state budget in the following amounts. Two million dollars for a second water tower, a million and a half dollars for the lift station upgrade. I asked for four million dollars to upfit the pier, eight-hundred thousand for Block Q, and five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand as the towns match for the coastal storm damage reduction study. Now, these numbers will change as ebbs and flows to the general assembly and they may not actually be, if any of it gets awarded, but this is what we've gone in with the first blush on it.
Aspirational.
What did I say?
Now, you're right.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'm saying they're aspirational.
Can, can I ask a question on the, the lift station upgrade? This is for the last thing we have to do. We're supposed to have a federal earmark.
Two-point-seven million.
Two-point-seven. Are you assuming that, that our projected cost is going to?
We're basing that on four million dollars is what we're thinking that the bids may come in at. But when it came time to write the letter, I didn't have. But when it came time to write the letter, I didn't have the the benefit of a perfect crystal glass, and we wanted to get it registered.
And the 525 CSDR?
We're.
Where is that?
We're we're we actually have some detail that I'm gonna kick that to Kristi on here in a minute.
Because I am totally confused about exactly what the proposed cost and years that we have to pay is on this project now.
Uh, let me see what my next slide is. Can I come back to that?
Sure.
This this is where we'll come in on that. Additional funding streams, we've got a federal ask in of $1.5 million for the operations and maintenance of the Lockwood Folly inlet. That that's for the upcoming federal fiscal year, beginning one October of '23. And we've also asked for $425,000 for the Corps to have in their budget. And that's a worst case scenario, and and we'll, I'm gonna give a sub detail on that in a moment. Just a reminder that the the FY '23 has 2.7 million in the lift station upgrade at Greensboro Street. That's EPA money, and we've been going back and forth with them on just exactly how that's to be administered. There's $100,000 of stormwater money in this year's budget, and there's also $1 million in the Corps' CSDR. The 1.5 that we're asking for next year for the Lockwood Folly inlet maintenance, that's related to the footnote that the Corps currently got a million bucks in its in its budget to carry out O and M maintenance in the Lockwood Folly inlet. So Kristi, you wanna?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Everybody will take a, everybody will take your pen and draw a line under the yellow line there, out to the side where it says 1,800,000. That'll help us live our talk and talk with the board. There's a road that's yellow, so we'll draw a line underneath. Okay, so we reached out to the Corps a couple weeks ago, decided to get some clarification on what would be expected of this budget here, and also to have some information for the earmarks request, so that we would know what our part of the budget impact is this year, but also what we need to ask for on their side. And the updated information that we have is provided in this spreadsheet from them. They had an internal meeting on Friday of week before last, where they had a discussion on the three-by-three extension for the extra 11 months and the extra money. There was not a final decision point on that from their headquarters, but that looks like they're going to move in a favorable direction. But the other part of that discussion was on the DRA funding, and the DRA funding is looking like it is a high probability for Holden Beach to receive, according to the Corps. One of the reasons for that is that it was specifically, when they did the reallocation, specifically named for storms that impacted southeast North Carolina, of which we are the only project. So they feel very confident that if you draw that line, I mean, they can't guarantee it, but the way it looks, that we should have an answer in the next few weeks. And what they submitted for the DRA funding is anything that falls under that yellow line would then be all federal cost. So the only thing the town would be obligated for would be the $50,000 that you saw included in the budget worksheets that were in your packet, which was money they got at the end of last year, and we would have to pay the $800,000 that we had put in this year's budget before the end of June. So next year, we would only put $50,000 in if the DRA funding comes through. If the DRA funding does not come through, worst case scenario is that you would be looking at half of everything in that total increment column past that yellow line. So that would be 725,000 to finish the study through 2026, of which next year would be the $50,000 plus our match of 425.
And now we're not going to be finished until 2026.
That is their prediction for the 11 months.
And six months ago, it was going to be finished in 2025, because originally it was three years, then it was going to be a little over four years, and now we're five
And lastly, regarding additional funding streams, we've got information this morning, or have been advised this morning, that the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, the program manager there, Thomas Bennett, has communicated that FEMA has issued its congressional notification for Holden Beach's four-storm damage repair projects, and that's administratively, that's FEMA's last required step before final approval and release of the town's remaining $600,000 reimbursement. We'll be glad to see those funds.
David, is that amount the amount of interest that we incurred during the project?
Half a million dollars is the interest, and then there's about another $100,000 of attorney fees, administrative type fees that go along with that. And a portion of it was a holdback because they hold back 100% of the management costs. But anyway, the lion's portion of it is insurance, interest payments on the special obligation, short-term special obligation.
Aren't we unique in the fact that we're getting that?
I'll speak with that.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't remember when it was before the project started, but I remember sitting in Mr. Hewitt's office and him looking across the desk and saying, somebody's going to have to explain to me why we can't get this interest because it's written into the FEMA policy, at which point we began that battle. And if we do get this, we would be, according to the reports from Warden Smith that they sent you last month, but also from everything we've heard, and there's been legislation at the federal level to try to get FEMA to make a more clear policy, but we would be the first in the nation to receive the reimbursement for interest.
But that's due to you and Mr. Hewitt and your staff going after something nobody else has thought of. So I would like to personally applaud all of you for doing that. That's $600,000 this town would not have gotten if they were satisfied just to collect a paycheck and go home. So thank you all. I'm gonna clap for $600,000.
I'm gonna wait till we get the check.
Well, that was gonna be, that was gonna be my next question, Drew, so any timeline associated with that, so we can consider it within our budget?
It went to the congressional notification, and as soon as they give the head nod, it's typically a 45-day turnaround from the state to cut check.
Thank you, Kristen. Good job.
Okay, so what I've what I've done is outlined the schedule, the documents organization, and gone through some highlights relative to the the budget. And I don't know if the board is so inclined, but I'm also ready to go into the project update, which is part and parcel of, you know, those budget budget discussions.
Everybody ready? Okay.
So you just got the the update, based on the conversations that we have, Bob Keisler and Brendan Dooley regarding the path forward and the funding, and their optimism regarding the DRA funding and the congressional position. And the congressional positioning note there, I just want to make everybody aware of it. Congressman Rousher, I believe, is now the chairman of the Water Resources Development Worda Committee, so that's a good thing for southeastern North Carolina. The pier property renovation, that agreement is on tomorrow night's agenda. Stormwater mitigation project, we've had two meetings with Chris, I, Tim, and a ride around with Chris with with McGill and Associates to prepare for the getting the April deliverable to the board. And we've had another development just this afternoon with the Corps' point of contact, Jim Medlock, regarding the $100,000 federal appropriation. We will be, he reached out to me, and we will be meeting tomorrow to discuss just what the parameters of that funding are tomorrow afternoon. Water tower needs assessment, water asset inventory, y'all aware that you executed a contract in February, and that work has begun. Chris has got a whole, or believes that there's a whole bunch of of cost in that contract that we're not going to have to incur based on some data that we had already acquired. So that's a that's a good thing. The existing restroom renovation, that CAMA grant application, as promised at the February meeting, is on your agenda for tomorrow night, as is the Block Q revised engineering agreement for the next phase of of Block Q's development. ADA access plan, that is a work in progress.
We'll have more information tomorrow.
Have more information tomorrow. Greensboro Street lift station improvements, we have finally been able to locate who it is that was going to be our point person to guide us through that project. They have promptly gone on the Family Medical Leave Act, and the substitute has been providing some canned guidance to us in the form of, we have done some preliminary thing like make sure our SAMs registration is updated, and are awaiting the deliverable and scheduling of a webinar on exactly how to take that down. I hope the OPR comes back soon, Office of Primary Responsibility.
But we have no idea when we might actually
I'm I'm.
Understand and possibly see money.
I'm, it's going to be on a reimbursement basis.
Okay.
That's what that's what we know, and I'm including it in the in the budget, the the upcoming year's budget, as if we will know when that happens.
Well, at least we know it's reimbursement now.
Yeah. Paid parking adjustments, y'all amended that that fee schedule at the February meeting. I talked to Jim earlier today, they're, he and Frank have done a street-by-street review, looking at about probably $6,000 to $7,000 of signage to procure and deploy. And I wasn't able to see him today, but before the end of the week, we'll move forward on get making those adjustments for the for the paid parking program. And then 796, that contract for the maintenance services is also on your agenda for tomorrow night. That's all, I believe that's all I know. That's the last slide. Yes, sir.
Any questions of Mr. Hewitt?
My only question is, the, as Pat mentioned about our beach study, they've, you said they've added another year to it?
The, no, what came across by email today was a notification that there had been proposed rule change that includes some, includes core natural disaster procedures, preparedness, response, recovery activities, and there is a section in there specific to impacts or were proposed changes to the coastal storm damage reduction, and this would be after a disaster. And all I'm saying is, I think it would be, I don't know what all this means, comments closed on February 16, 2023. I think we should understand this before we make any decisions, final decisions about, formally, yes, we're going to move forward with the Corps. And I would be reasonably certain that our federal lobbying group would be on top of this to explain what is in here and what the possible ramifications are.
We've asked that of them, and I'm assuming that they'll provide us something forthwith.
Yeah, I don't doubt that they are up to speed on it, that something went in, something got commented on, and there are changes to the rules, whether or not they have financial implications.
They're proposed.
It's proposed, it has to, it has proposed, but whether or not there would be financial implications to the non-federal sponsor or changes we would need to be aware of moving forward, it would be good to understand.
And I think that with Congressman Rousher being on the Worda Board, that we're positioned favorably to find out exactly what that is.
Yes, sir.
I got one little ask, David, if it's not too much trouble, we talked about this earlier, but I'd like, if you could, put together a debt service sheet with amortization payments remaining.
Got it.
Interest rates, that type of thing, if you if you could, something just simple. You want to speak to that, sir?
He needs to be sitting up here with us.
Yeah, that's that's something we can print directly off the debt book, so.
Thanks.
It's not a problem.
Anything else we need to talk about, number four or number six?
Well, I had some questions on the, I know this is rough, this is rough still, but I did have questions, questions. On the ad valve, the revenue neutral, I understand this is your calculation of revenue neutral with the actual number that you project the, whatever our collection rate is, times that number?
Well, the the
It does, it's not necessary.
It doesn't, it's not, it's not included. It's it's not factored in.
General fund revenues, interest on savings and investment, every year we're budgeting $20,000, and I don't see that we're making that at all. Should we become a little bit more realistic about that number?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, rates are going up, naturally.
But it's
Absolutely.
But we still, we are looking at 20, budgeting $20,000, and we've been making a couple thousand. So I, I mean, I'm just saying, it's it's been a bit. Blue can home recycling, are we on a downslope, or are we thinking that this?
We're getting, we're getting ready to pull some cans if people don't pay their bill.
Okay, so we may end up changing this number.
I think that lower recycling decreased a few years, or rates and everything changed.
That's one thing that came in there, too.
So we might, we might alter that number depending on the next month or two?
If they don't pay their bill, what what are you doing about it?
Pulling a can.
Well, other than slap them on the wrist and say, bad
Well, you
Bad owner.
They do date to pick them up this week.
Yeah, but there's nothing beyond that you can do?
We've sent three emails, and we've gotten a lot of response from them, but and then if they don't pay by then, either repay to keep picking it up, because they're not paying. And so they'll pick it up, and then sometimes people come back and pay after their cart's been picked up.
Is the town out any money on that?
I think that we have been out some in the past, but then again, there's always the argument that there is a surcharge that we've added on to being of the subscription service, so.
This bill came directly from GFL for the recycling can?
Comes to us. I'm, I'm sorry. We pay the bill, and you have a can, and you come to town and pay it. We run the revenues, we run the money through our account.
Um, local sales and use tax, just
Many of these are just straight lines.
It's just, but it's
Yeah, because we don't have the state distributed revenues yet.
It's a, it's a nice jump, which I don't, I don't have, it's just, how did you arrive at at the kind of a number?
That's really a historical thing, and since what the sales and use tax, a lot of those, that's the state distributed revenue, that you got a lot of people that are buying stuff that are that you got a lot of people that are buying stuff that are point of sales now, and so the, the revenues have gone up in the last couple of years. But for this year, that particular number, we just straightlined that number.
Well, it's just, right now, we're sitting at two, at 281, and you're estimating 390 for next year.
Yeah, and it's a quarterly distribution, so it's actually one of the accruals that happens at the end of the year, and then it gets placed by.
Okay. Um, under building permits and all the inspections, I see you cited it's flat, is this just reflecting kind of a cooling off a little bit of construction?
Uh, Tim, Tim's estimates were actually quite a bit more pessimistic than mine, and so I've straightlined at this, this current year's levels.
Is that something that we can maybe bring up in a, a commissioner meeting to-
Well, just, I, I, I want to, I want to-
Possibly move some rates up, and maybe even-
They are.
Put in some, uh-
They're forthcoming.
Put in some new permit opportunities for things that, that if people want to do it, they need to pay for it?
We're, we're, we're actually, tomorrow night, you're going to be addressing, addressing the new fee schedule that we've put in place. We're actually a little behind, where some of the other municipalities, we're using the ICC standards now, and you've got some options there, but I gave you what I thought were the best options for the increase in the fees. And, and while there are no new, most of the permitting requirements are limited by the statutory authority for issuance permits based off of dollar amounts, fees, and that kind of thing. So it hinders, hinders us a little bit on deciding to add permitting opportunities, because the state law restricts what we can permit, or what we can charge a permit for. So, but we can, we are, we are, we do need to elevate our fees, so, we need to raise the fees. They are behind, and we're behind the other municipalities. Now, and these projections are not based off the new fees, but what I have done is I can tell you this is, would be a 25% increase. I've determined that that would be, we could estimate a 25% increase, whether you use David's straight line or my, my, mine, the reason mine was so pessimistic is because we started so early. I have to, I have to do some math, and I go back several years, and the reason mine was so pessimistic is we started so early, and I didn't have, I usually I'd have eight or nine months before I start trying to calculate what our next year revenues are going to be, and we started a little early. So I was, I was afraid.
Sorry for interruptions, yes.
Um, the new Town Hall Ops Maintenance and Repair, can you just, what, for next year, what is that going to cover? This year, we were supposed to have some significant repairs, if I remember right?
We, we all, we always, we always, we started budgeting for three air conditioner units going out. That's, you know, that's kind of the standard thing now, and there are a couple of them out there 14 years old.
Yeah, there's, they, you, where they're located is about a three to five-year rotation, on the wrong side of the building.
So it's just going to be, uh, this is, this is what it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or more?
Let's not hold that out. Administrative expenses, software, I'm just, a reminder of what the software is?
That's administrative.
No, you're, but-
So that, the software encompasses, encompasses basically everything from taxes to water billing, and we've been working with getting that all the way through, but we're going to have to carry some forward. The implementation manager actually passed that we had, so that was kind of a setback.
So this is just a continuation of what we started?
Yes. It's not new money.
Yeah, it's, it's the same project, it's just it's taken longer to get it done.
Right.
Okay. And the contracted services, software support, exactly what is that? It's on the next page, administrative expenses.
A part of that is, we were already paying software support with the current software, but with the newer software, the amount goes up a little more, and-
We're going to be running two systems simultaneously.
So we're doubling our support costs?
Yeah.
And so that's just going to be in every year?
But, but the, but it's going to be as an, on an interim basis, we're going to have, we're going to have two systems running until we can swap off.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to get what is permanent and what is like, you know, a one-off or a couple of years, because this has implications for what we're going to try to figure out in-
Right.
How much money you add value. Okay, so this will be for a couple of years?
Is what we're doing working? The new software, is it working the way we thought it would?
We're, we're still implementing it.
Okay.
You're in transition.
Yeah, they're, they're working on their parts behind the scenes, and hopefully by the end of summer, they'll start implementing the program here.
Okay, I didn't know exactly how that was working. Thank you.
So once it's fully transferred over, is that when we start taking credit card payments and such? Um, right now, we're doing border impacters in some of the parts, and I think at some other meeting, someone else was going to look into the credit cards. What are you talking about, for permits and stuff like that?
Yeah, Daniel's reviewing that from the aspect of internal controls on exactly how to do it, but it's going to be part of the implementation on this new software.
Okay.
But we got, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta get the fundamentals down first.
Uh-huh.
I'm currently working on a, bringing us in to more compliance with the Brunswick County and Sunset Beach. We're looking into a portal to handle inspections, and they're supposed to come give a demonstration on Wednesday. The, the portal, as I understand it, will allow the acceptance of, of, of the receipt through, for payment through credit cards on some things. We're hoping to separate the planning, excuse me, the permit review process from the portal, but I won't be able to tell until they give us the demonstration, but I do understand that we can have some payments go through the portal and still just isolate it to the inspection department. We're hoping we can do that for inspection.
Um, my only comment on police expenses is, I really was intrigued by patrol vehicle market prices changing daily.
I was, I was just making some notes as I was going through that, I threw out-
But if that's a fact, that's a fact.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, every time we've called for prices, whether it's lights, radios, quit everything, you know, it just, it seems, you can't get it consistent.
And not only that, it's the lead times on, on those things, and that's just, you know, a common theme through all of this budget stuff, Chris.
I was thinking that if you saw thirty-five miles, now about forty-three, forty-four.
Yeah. It's just tires and a steering wheel.
Oh, now that I'm thinking about it, the overall healthcare costs, have they been flat again this year, the estimates, pretty much?
Eight point seven, I believe, is what the increase is, and believe it or not, it is a lot lower than, a lot of our neighboring areas, yeah.
Okay. And what are the salary, salary numbers based on? Are they just based on the new lead?
The, it, yep, sorry, the, I believe that Daniel, when he figured it in, it's the new numbers, and then I believe a 5% COLA and, uh-
5% merit.
Merit, sorry.
The COLA was based on CPI, it was six point nine. Nine, yeah, I think that's what I meant to say. Yeah, six point nine percent.
You're proposing an 11.9% increase?
Yes.
For initial budget deliberations, yes, ma'am.
And that's a combination of COLA and merit?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Anybody want to speak? Because it's rich for my blood, I'll tell you right now. Um, pavement, we're in public works now. The pavement management plan, is it time for us to do a new one? It's that Powell bill money just running?
Yeah, it's been a few years of such groups building, kind of, that thing, prices and everything have changed, the deal with some streets have kind of reorganized that.
Well, now, this, this is, this is not the Powell bill study money, this is actually the pavement condition assessment performed, performed by Itree and the towns consultant engineer.
Sorry, the streets have used a pay every, every year to put a car rail.
Okay, and then, so once you got that, then you decide what order that you're going to be?
It'll, it'll-
It'll all factor into?
It'll, it'll totally rack up the 13 miles of Powell bill streets in terms of, of a priority in a 10-year capital plan.
I'm running speak on that, my careful beginning with the number, yeah, down there, the April streets this year. Sorry about that. The streets that we had on there this year, we're actually waiting on the bids, it'd probably be April before we get those bids, and really, I'm kind of looking for them to come in high, that's what we've been seeing in the past few years, so I don't really know if we have the funding to proceed with that this year, I'm hoping we can, but I'll know more after mid-April, whether we want to go with it or not, we just go to the streets. We'd have to push them ahead, if we do, and we'll just go to the next three streets on our CIP plan until we get, uh-
What are the streets this year?
If, if, uh-
I just don't-
Point West, High Bridge, and Range, I think was on there.
Oh, there it is, I see it, okay.
And I was actually, in our current, you know, like I said, I'd love to go get and complete that or not, if you want to try it, send me in there.
Sorry, I'm, I do my, on every page. The water sewer fund revenues, we just, we, we aren't putting the earmark, did I miss it, or we just aren't putting earmark money in because it's reimbursement?
No, I want to say that we put that in.
Why, did I miss it, then?
It may be that you did, but it may be that I I know we got it on the expense side.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay, it's just, it's just something we got, did, again, did I? I don't see it in the revenues, so.
Oh, well, that's, I hope, it's highly likely that that's not the only large-
Okay.
Two comma number that we've left off of it, but, you know, yeah.
Okay.
Neither does it, neither does it have the, the two-seven in revenue, that it won't actually have the delta in there either, because we're going, you know, in a, in a perfect world, we, we, we would get some of these direct appropriations, but if it doesn't, we're going to have to go through the deliberation on how we, how we would make up that difference there.
Well, you have loan proceeds for $600,000 in water and sewer.
That's, that's what we put in there.
That's what you put in for the making up the difference?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that only takes it to three-three, and it doesn't match up with what we swag for the $4 million total cost.
Right.
But neither does the, uh, does the, uh, the three-three expense for that project get close to it either.
Right. Um, on the tapping connection fees, Chris, I see that you've got, if the new rate is approved, and I, I see in the tomorrow's meeting that you have proposals, I remember a year, year and a half ago or so, when the county raised their fees, they had a rough cap, they had a calculation of justifying why the fees should be what they are. Have we just pretty much assumed that that applies to our town, too?
We have the same type of meter read system, the same type of meters, same meter box, and everything that we have is identical.
Okay.
The price of carts and materials have gone so much up, it's gone up so much in the past two years, we're just breaking even on carts, basically, it does nothing but covering manpower, equipment, and all of that, it's like new construction, and, and I looked at Brunswick County, and that's, that's not a complete copy of Brunswick County, but it's fairly close to what I thought was, was right. Actually, our three-quarter taxes, about, I think, be $2,500 on there, and I think that Brunswick County was like 27, but you notice, if you ever seen Brunswick County, they're 27 for a three-quarter, and 28 for a one-e, and there's $300 difference in meter box, so I don't know where they come up to that $100 math or, uh-
No, I, I mean, I, I agree, I, I thought that they were, there were big differences-
Yeah.
To begin, but I also saw that you were proposing dropping a couple of them, is, is, is that justified?
Dropping a couple.
I, I think you were, there were a couple of the fees that you were dropping about $100, did I? Well, we'll talk about it tomorrow, I, I may be-
I hadn't dropped any of our regional fees, I mean, everything that you see is actually going up, there's none of ours that's, that's dropped.
Okay. If we didn't have the new rates, did, what would that number be roughly? The tap, connection fees, did you?
I think it's about around $47,000, something like that, and this, you know, this is basically a, David Hewitt used to say, it's like cheap meat moving the dust, you know, it's just four and a half minutes had to do that year, I think we had about 25 units this year, maybe 13 wild, but what I have noticed, the past few years, it seems like we get more wild, you know, people don't play that sewer charge on water use.
On the, I guess we're on water now, I just saw something that was professional services, 42 and a half thousand, it says new EPA reg on lead service lines, I was just interested, what does that entail?
That may be some outside services that I have to rely on, there's new regulations that's come down the pipeline in the past few years, and it's a requirement for all water systems to actually do a survey on every home that they have, identifying the type of pipe that's going from the meter box to the house. And I really hadn't figured out all the details, because I'm kind of lost for how I'm supposed to go up on public property or private property and start inspecting the type of material. It all comes, that Clint, Michigan deal a few years ago, and they had lead service lines, we don't have lead service lines, but I've still got to do a lot of footwork to make that happen, and I don't know if I can pull that off, you know, in-house or not, I would like to, and the deadline's October 24th, so I'm, I'm burning for, for time, you know.
No, okay, I just, you probably explained it last year, too, and I just didn't-
I, I never mentioned it last year, I really didn't, didn't realize it was coming down the line about six months ago.
Okay.
And I was really pleased to hear it.
EOC Ops Maintenance and Repair, again, you've got a pretty hefty budget, and I notice that we typically do not meet that budget. I mean, the, the past years, it hasn't been so, i- is that realistic, or is that, I mean, does it have actual things behind it this year?
I think that we could possibly have things behind it, we've got a number of air conditioners there that's never been replaced since we've been there, actually, all of the garage doors are actually, they're not just kids, you know, chain, they're, they're pretty complicated, they won't take too many in the malfunction and, and you could go in with some money, and I've actually got to hope somebody might replace them too, the doors, now that we've got any issues on, so I'd be scared to take that out.
Okay, that's fine. The wat, the 796 currently belongs to Water Sewer, I don't see anything about 796, just maintenance and basics in here.
My understanding- My understanding is the water and sewer department owns it, so I guess, you know, as far as maintenance, if I had some law maintenance idea, you know, I could tie it to a lead stake in this right there beside it.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that there was something, that there, somewhere, if something happened, there was...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Christie?
Yes, ma'am.
So in the B part budget, there's a blank line with no money in that for this year, that 796 still is showing up in B part. Pat, I know that you sent at least Tim and I an email about considerations of looking at some of the board's ideas about maybe a way to still do a bathroom concept down there and a few things. And so I didn't know if the board may be discussing that as part of their goals today.
It was the question of whether or not, you know, a more passive rec site, a more passive site that would have restrooms and a, you know, someplace for people to stop and snack and look out the deck that wouldn't actually involve inside the building per se as a way of starting to move. That still means, if I understand this right, it still means B part has to buy it from Water Sewer, which is $356,000 or whatever, before that can officially start. But if there are issues about, you know, people being concerned about having an activity center there, creating a more passive rec building is still a way of having a recreation defined building without it, I guess drawing the tremendous activity people seem to be concerned it would draw. Again, that's part of the 796 plan discussion that the board needs to have and resolve. But there would still need to be a check up front for $356,000. David explained the accommodation tax estimate, which was fine. He explained parking revenue, which was fine. Christie, I really appreciate the level of detail you went into for things like professional services and some of the rec programs where, you know, you give a lot of information about, in a lot of cases, not just what, but also how much is estimated, and I appreciate that.
Can I make one point about that while I'm on this page? I did catch some things going back through review today. That duplication line, that caught last year's detail. So those details, I want to see that change for the next one, that was this year's project.
I was looking at that thinking, I thought we were doing all this this year, pretty much.
I'll create a note that says change description. And also that showing up on your spreadsheet, there was a bit of detail on mine that I have more space on my spreadsheet, is that 89 eight for Gordon Smith, that's the B part part, but that's not their entire contract because a part of it comes from the...
Canal.
So just to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
Public restrooms, this is a question, I guess, right now that it's just, we have a budget that we were going to do something to the restrooms for this year and we're not going to use it. So ideally, that could be money that could go someplace else for this year.
You are going to place someplace else with it, some of it.
We're going to propose for tomorrow night that some of that be used for the Block Q contract.
Okay, I figured that would be it.
Because restrooms were a part of his scheme.
You explained the coastal storm damage reduction because I looked at that number and didn't understand it. So I think those were my questions on what's in here.
Anybody else have anything you want to talk about? Madam Clerk, does this complete our obligation to...
Christie wants some more.
I need to make the board aware one more thing. When we, in last month's meeting, when you decided for the grant that's considered tomorrow night, that you just wanted to consider the bathroom portion, because you wanted to move forward with development on Block Q on your own for boat trailer, which the estimate that we had internally based on the estimates that we had received in the past on making stormwater arrangements for that was $300,000, and that got not on your spreadsheets. So you're not seeing a line that says Block Q development, $300,000. So that's a $300,000 swing knot on here, just wanted to reference that.
Anything else that we haven't covered on the agenda? Madam Clerk, are we okay?
The discussion of the coastal storm damage reduction study ramifications. I still want to discuss that.
You want to discuss that some more, all right?
Okay. I think that the decision to go with this program was made a couple of years ago. I think that it is rational to have a rediscussion of this, given changes in deadlines, changes in costs, the fact that Oak Island now is going to have a coastal storm damage reduction study, and should we actually have the two islands done together? We have an inlet in between us that both of us have issues with. We have erosional ends of our islands that are on each side of that. Would it make more sense to have one assessment done for the entire stretch and work together on this to make sure that what happens upstream and downstream works? Because right now, we're downstream. And I think if we're looked at as just an isolated case and behind us, Oak Island is looked at as an isolated case, it isn't going to be as beneficial, it isn't going to be as useful, it probably won't be the best solution for everybody and the inlet as looking to have everything done together. We're ahead by a season. Okay, that's all we're ahead by is one season. That's the thing is, before we get further and further ahead and more and more data is grabbed as an isolated island, I think we should consider whether or not this is the best thing to do. And again, I wouldn't want to move forward in any event without having feedback from our lobbyists about what this proposed rule could mean. Proposed rules don't always go through, but I would say they generally go through in some form when they've gotten to this stage, unless the comments are all really negative, and that would be part of what we need to know from the lobbyist is, out of all the comments that were made, you know, is there a lot of pressure to, you should not be doing this? Because that would be very useful to know.
I guess that everybody has an opinion, and my opinion is, I think we need to leave us as a, our island, we're, like you said, we're a year ahead, we need to continue to be that way, and I don't think what they do has got a whole lot to do with what we're, what our plans are and what our options will be for nourishment in the future.
I don't know. I think that if Oak Island does go forward and push to have a groin on the west end of their island, that's got some pretty serious ramifications for us.
That wouldn't make any sense on the west end.
That's what's in their plan.
Okay.
I'm just saying, that's what's in their plan. That is something that they have published, that they are putting in their beach plan and that they will be, I assume, actively seeking. Remember, their west end, for whatever reason, has some serious problems. Our east end is our issue end. So, you know, they're going to rob Peter to pay Paul, kind of. I'm just, I think it would behoove us to look at working with Oak Island to see if there is a benefit to the two of us combining and having a single project that covers both islands and that inlet.
Christie?
With our scheduled budget meetings, is that something you would want to wait to consider at a next budget meeting with the information that we were given that it's going to hopefully be a decision on DRA funding at 100% federal in the next few weeks?
I don't think this is, I mean, funding isn't the driving force of the should we do both islands together. Okay, funding is not. The best possible outcome is my concern. But, I mean, again, you don't have to pay the core until June, so deferring any further discussion and decision for another month for people to think about it is fine. You said you don't have to pay the core until June.
Well, it depends on when the core sends us the requisition for funds.
I said the $800,000 would come out of this budget year. I don't think I specifically said a month. So when they put their funds request in, when they're ready to move on their side, then we have to support that with our side because we've got an earmark for them for the $800,000. The $50,000 would not be until the July budget year. But when they send us requests for funding for the $800,000, then we would be obligated to send our $800,000 that we budgeted in this budget year in.
I have serious reservations about moving forward Justice Holden Beach without having Oak Island as part of this.
I have the same reservations about doing the other way. If we do it together, then it's going to be, well, you know, we split the sand with them and all that stuff. No, it needs, we need to do our own, our own study. We'd split, we go into partnership with them and it's going to be a partnership on everything. I don't think it's a good idea.
This is not like dredging Lockwood Folly where it's every other year. We're talking about from one end to the other, we're talking about probably two areas for sand, and we're talking about how to, again, best address, frankly, Lockwood Folly. Okay, between the two. If I'm the only one that feels strongly about this, once again, I am only one commissioner. But I doubt any of you have done as much reading and research as I have.
All right, where do you commissioners want to go from here?
Well, I'm done, so we can adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you all for...